Uh, welcome everybody to the meeting. Um, is there any agenda additions or deletions?
Did we end up with a letter that we have for Lister tonight, or should we delete that?
Um, I just have the letter from Kevin if you want to read it.
Yeah, but do we have a letter of resignation? So it's a mute point. So I'll make a motion that we delete the Lister position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
Also make a motion that we add under old business and update on where we're at with heat pumps.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, any other agenda additions or deletions? All right, I asked for a motion with regard to the regular meeting September twenty-sixth, twenty-two.
So moved, subject to any corrections or alterations?
Second by Bob. Is there any? If anybody have any comments?
They look good to me.
I thought they looked good.
Yeah. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cash, you have a report first?
Uh, the South Creek Road finally got tired last week. And come out pretty decent, except for the uh, the end of it, that goes on in the dirt. We gotta shim that up a little bit. The uh, shoulders needed to, need to be uh, filled with material. Um, that, with that being said, what I'm looking at, uh, possibly it's up to the board decision to get a price from Tommy Fuller. Because he did Lock Mountain Road in, I don't know, what'd he do, four hours, five hours? Banked it out.
Yep.
It wasn't that bad of a bill on the whole length of Lock Mountain Road. So see what his availability is if it's, if the board feels that I can go ahead and seek a pricing for that. Um.
Anybody have any objections to that?
Also, Pimpahill up there that got paved there that I reported last time, um, the one-way on East Clarendon Road. With that being said, we have a shoulder machine and the only truck that had, would fit was the one last international that we owned. Um, when Rutland Town built the framework to make it into a push that would act like a paver. Um, it was too short of a frame to go into these trucks because ours don't have the overhang on the back. So, I also with us doing it, we did East Street that time. East Road, East Clarendon Road, over by Whistle Stop. And you talk about a long drought out process for us with that shoulder machine. So therefore, is that a piece of equipment that's kinda obsolete to us? Should we look at possibly getting prices and selling it? Um, or you guys think we oughta hang on to it?
No, clearly we're like, can't use it.
And basically Rutland Town kinda owns half of it because they did all the framework and we had the machine and they did all the work and the manufacturing. They bought all the steel to make the framework and all that stuff.
Did you get any money for it?
Should get something out of it.
So where's it reside?
Right now it's still in Rutland Town.
Do they wanna just buy our shit out?
I have no idea. I haven't talked to them yet. I wanted to find out what the board's pleasure was on it first.
I didn't realize we had any equipment that was co-owned anymore.
Well, if we can't use it, no sense keeping it.
Basically it was a trade because they were using it and we were using it back and forths and they they did that, just like agreement, just to, on the framework and stuff.
So who bought it originally?
Clarendon, we did, right?
Yep.
It was here when I called. Yeah, probably Norm.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand. So we bought the equipment. How did Rutland Town come into the equation?
Uh, by doing the framework and stuff to make it fit the trucks.
But it doesn't fit anything of ours.
Don't fit our big, our tandems now. See, we've got all tam- tandem.
So that alteration obviously happened just recent?
Uh, four years ago, three years ago, three years ago. Yeah. And we turn into a, what it is actually a paver, it, the force of the payloader goes into it. You actually push the truck while you paver.
But it still fits their trucks?
Yeah. Yeah, cuz they get the single axle.
Right, so if we had to modify it, then it would not fit their trucks?
Right. So I don't know if we
But if it's
And the other thing is for, like I said, us to use it, it was quite a lengthy task for us to do all the functions with it when, like Tom Fuller's got a regular paver for shoulders only. And they did, I think it was like four, four and a half hours, something like that, did the whole Lock Mountain. We had trucked the material up here from down near the uh, crushed a, crushed asphalt. And loaded the trucks here to save transportation from damage.
Seeing to me, if we can't use it, well, we just see if they wanna buy it and if they do, come back and report and let's get her done. What do you think?
And the other, the other road we did was um, Moulton Avenue, I believe in Bob and uh, Alfred's Road.
Yeah.
And with that, the paver they have, the, the shoulder just, just levels it right out as it goes and ours, we have to run the grader and stuff to, it actually dumps into a pile down through a trough and depends on
You gotta spread it.
Yeah, well, yeah, dumps into that hopper. It has a belt, crossbelt, conveyor belt like, so. We also have done it somewhat, we, and probably Pimpahill, the other one way we can actually do with our trucks, with the um, sand, side chute, with salt, sand comes out. Could do that. So.
I don't have any problem getting a quote, quote, seeing what it'll charge.
Right.
Um.
I wanna say you charge, I don't know, twenty-three hundred to do that up there, something like that. I'll have to look. Heidi actually could pull it up.
Yeah, why don't you do that and get rid of that if we can't use it? And just the other towns using it.
Yeah, the main, the, after using it, using it, the time it took for us to you, it dumps it in a pile and you gotta go down through the grader and stuff and you know, and the guy pushing the truck with the payloader, you know, try, you try to get it level, but you get more in some spots and less in others and it comes out okay, but so I ju- I'm just throwing it out there.
What kind of shared, I don't ever remember seeing anything. So what kind of shared paperwork is there on that?
There's not.
So there's no contract like we had on the roadside more?
No. Cause Byron just wanted to use it that time and then he come up with the idea, he goes, well, why don't we make it into a push unit? Originally that unit, he hung it on a truck.
Okay.
On tailgate. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
And I never seen it that way, but that was when Norm was here and I don't know if Darryl even used it or and it's set for quite a few years. We took it, you know, freed it up and we haven't invested much in it as far as um, pumps or anything like that. It's, it's an old rig. It's old. I don't know. I had no idea. I can check with a couple dealers and I would think between two and four thousand's worth.
Is what it's worth.
Yeah.
That's one to send over to transfer station for quite a while?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all spent undercover. The belt's pretty, you know, it works and stuff.
Yeah.
The cross conveyor belt.
I don't have a problem seeing if they wanna buy it out. I would just say going forward, any agreements like that should go before the board cuz we've always run those through making sure they're legal with Bill and making sure that we've got a written, I's dotted and T's crossed, like lease type agreement back and forth.
Yeah.
Cuz handshakes and nods can only go so far in this day and age. But I don't have a problem seeing, like you say, it doesn't fit anything of ours. So if they wanna
Well, not, no, yeah, it's just that the, the input of time and stuff of, of functions of it. I mean, that's added a lot of time to us.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Where we could be doing some other things.
Are they using it quite regularly, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
They might not even be interested. I don't know. I would think so, but
If they, if they need it, they go and pick it up?
Yep. Last summer they come and picked it up.
Hmm. Well, why don't you check on it and see what they, then report back and we'll go from there. Anything else?
Yes, but the only other thing we're working up there ditching on Lock Mountain Road where we had a lot of ice problems last year. Um, Bob actually went up with me at the site last week and checked it out and stuff and explained what we're doing.
Yeah, you were working up there today?
With the resident up there and stuff.
You get started on that one?
It's all done.
Yeah, all done, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see
Any feedback?
From With her, there was uh, an email or she apparently called me, left a voicemail Friday and was very happy with the way it transpired and she, she was like, are you doing it anymore cuz we went to our limit of what we had to do.
Yeah.
And it was done.
Yeah.
And it come out pretty decent.
Backed up in that one extra little, yeah, okay.
And same with the other driveway.
Yep.
Terabashe's.
Yeah, we had to shape that so the water comes down. We put in a catch basin.
Did they have any input when you were cutting some types? When uh, when they were cutting the ditch, when you guys were cutting the ditch in front of Terabashe's house?
What do you mean input, what?
It looked like you were cleaning that ditch out. The Terabashe's
Yeah.
Come out.
Not to me. I don't think Mark ever saw him. So right now we're by Ron's Auto ditching up through there, a Mumford Road. Um, the water comes right down the tire and coming off his, you know, his roof of his house and garage and the parking lot. So we're gonna try to harness that water so don't, before it gets onto the tire. Cuz that, that's another thing is when we, our thought is maybe down, down the road before we, if we can get a grant next year for doing Lock Mountain Road from the new bridge to Wilders Bridge or up to one thirty-three, whatever it is. Um, to redo that apron. Uh, Ron's Auto, uh, Mumford, or yeah, Mumford at Ron's Auto, do that entire apron cuz it's bellied down.
Yeah.
And that's where the water gets into it and comes right down out of the road. Um, what was the other one? Oh, uh, Anderson or uh, Higher Road, that triangle right there of apron.
Yeah.
Tie, tie, tie that into the Lock Mountain project, even though it's not, you know, it's gonna be on the town side financially on it. But that would help to get to divert that water instead of coming down in the main part of traffic of the road.
So you would be essentially redoing that whole intersection, like?
Uh, which one?
On the, on Tier Road? Or Higher Road?
Higher Road, Higher Road.
These are live up there, why the hell, I can't remember that.
Yep. Cuz there's no way, cuz there's, when everybody uses that whole area, plus you got school buses that turn around here.
Yep.
So there's no way to do just a section of it or a triangle of it for the traffic pattern cuz people do turn around here in the bus.
A lot of work on that road.
That's about all I have.
All right, any questions for the road commissioner?
Nope.
All right, um, approval of select board warrants and they're, I think they're right over here by cash. Uh, any guests? Public comments? All business. Cemetery committee. Cemetery rules.
You wanna speak to that?
Well, I was gonna ask, did anybody get any, we asked for public feedback. Did anybody get any feedback?
No.
No, I didn't.
Hearing none, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve the cemetery committees, uh, the cemetery rules and regulations as presented.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? I thought they were pretty good, actually.
There was one thing brought up by Robert at the meeting around the timeframe of the stone.
Yeah.
And he wanted a clause about unless a waiver is obtained from the town select board or cemetery committee.
Yeah, some kind of a little little statement to, you can, there is a possibility that it could happen, uh, you know.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to include that, uh, unless a waiver's unless a waiver's obtained um, by the town, from the town select board, it should come from us.
Yeah.
On that, I'm trying to find which number it is.
It's under section three, Tara Lots.
Section two, ready?
Um.
I've got three.
Section three.
Yeah, section three.
Yeah.
Section three, number one.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'll make that amendment to my motion of Bob's pleased with it.
That's mine.
What, what do you wanna change, Joe?
Just add on to the end of that. So section three, number one, just needs to be added on, um, unless a waiver is uh, applied for and received from the Clarendon Select Board. So it'll read all burials in Clarendon Cemetery shall have a memorial placed at the plot within a year of burial unless a waiver is applied for and granted from the Town of Clarendon Select Board.
You get that as a motion, Robert?
Yeah, I added it.
He added it, he added it.
As long as you're good with the second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I amended my motion.
Yeah, mine.
Is there anything else? All right, hearing nothing, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There you go. Nice job. Where did you get a lot of that information?
From the Town of Westford and the Town of Barnard. Both of them went through the same issues we had and Town of Barnard enacted theirs in twenty nineteen, so it's fairly recent history. Town of Pittsford is also in the process of doing, you know, having people remove stuff and removing stuff.
When I went, uh, walkover
It wasn't my brainchild, it was
When I went on a walkover with you, at the button, I could see what you're, you're saying. There's a lot of
It's baffling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of junk that
All over the place.
God. You know, people were concerned with their past relatives and stuff and they try to do the right thing, make it look nice, but then two years later, it's flying all over the place. All right.
Got some additional, if you're still in cemetery, I've got some additional stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, Elizabeth Ewing Fox, Elizabeth Fox Ewing. The application, we called here, uh, requested a burial cremation. There's a stone already up in West Clarendon. It's a four lot. The husband, I spoke with the daughter, the father's already in, and his son and his brother are already cremated, the remains are there. She's looking towards November fifth. She's looking at earlier about, I guess COVID, so they're looking on November fifth and it's cremation. There's room and it's their lot.
So I'll make a motion that we approve, um, so the Fox or the Ewing family uh, burial for November fifth and that all paperwork that comes through goes, goes ahead and is approved.
We haven't heard from uh, the person we chose for the tree removal. He sent the contract, so I've asked Katie, can I reach out tomorrow and, and see? Maybe there's a hiccup or
Motion made, let's get this cleared up first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Katie's gonna reach out to uh, Lear Trees. Tomorrow I'll just see, you know, uh, where, you know, where he's at. He's got the contract that was emailed to him, so. Uh.
Are you planning on, you know, when he sets up a date, are you planning on being up there?
I plan, I trust I'll be there.
Yeah.
I've, I've told him all, I, I, I plan to, I mean, if it's not uh, dead winter frost in the ground, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the three stones right at the base of the tree.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move them all away. And then I'll put them back. Where we're at with uh, the stone that got broke in Old Marsh.
Yep.
And I'm gonna ask Katie if she will contact Intrinsic, just let them know that we are pursuing uh, uh, quotes from a couple memorial companies about repair or replacing that stone. So they don't think that you know, it's been two weeks now and nothing's being done about it. I just want
Paper trail.
Them to know that, yeah, we are, we are pursuing something. Uh, I'm kinda discouraged with one company. I don't wanna go on, I'll hear and say it because I spoke with them last week. I asked for, they gave me a kind of a quote over the phone. I asked for a written quote. I replied back again. I spoke with them again on Wednesday for a written quote. And I sent, I typed out uh, the features of the stone, of the writing on the, printing on the stone to them. I didn't hear anything back on Thursday. I thought, well, it got to be Friday, so I thought, well, maybe I sent it to the wrong text phone, phone number. So I called the landline, the company, said, listen, have them get in touch with me. He did, he sent me a text. I'm in North Carolina, won't be back till the end of next week. And so, why didn't you tell me, you know, Monday, I don't know why he's there or when he went there, so. Uh, I've also reached out to another uh, memorial business. He's just frustrated with this one.
Yeah.
So, uh, I've pulled the stone out completely, filled the hole back in. I contacted, by law, we have, if there's a damage to the stone, we need to contact descendants if we know. Cousin lives in Ludlow. A closer cousin lives in Minnesota. So I've informed them both uh, what happened. Uh, trying to determine if the stone can be replaced or not. One of the problems is when the stone hit the ground, a lot of the letters on the facing just, it's such a brittle stone, just went, just went off. You know, he came to read the last name now, or you, but anyway, so uh, I've, I've reached out to them because we're, we're required by law to inform them if we know who the descendants are. Inform them of what we're doing and also make the stone, the old stone, original stone available for them to claim.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that's where we're at with them and I'm just waiting to get, you know, determination. I, I pulled the stone out because if it's repairable, if they think it's repairable, they're not gonna be able to do it.
On site, yeah.
On site now. It's, the temperature's gotten too cold for epoxy and stuff like that, so. I've got it and I'm, I got a large rolling table that I have backer boards and stuff like that. I, I've pulled stones and rebuilt them on backer boards and gone and set them in the back in place, but uh, if they feel it's repairable or, and some people, you know, no matter how damaged the stone is, they want the original stone in place. I'll let them
Make that decision.
Make that decision, but, uh, but that's where we're at with them. I'm just kinda frustrated now with, you know, I figured go local along.
So much for that.
Thank you for all your work, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Good job.
Cemeteries around town look really good shape now.
What's that, Mike?
Cemeteries around town, they look really good now. Good shape, so. Done good. All right, heat pumps.
Yeah, I was just curious for an update. I mean, we've already fixed the furnace once now, so I'm just wondering, cuz we're, we're in the midst of heat pump season, so I was just curious what the update is.
I don't know if the equipment's in. I did receive an email like a week ago about getting our taxes and certificate and information to them, which we've done that. But I can follow up and kind of pound the pavement more about installation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this time of year be the squeaky wheel cuz they're probably installing a ton of them and
Right, yeah.
Cuz everybody doesn't wanna burn oil, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Or has it?
How long ago did we order?
As soon as you guys approved it.
Yeah, so if they've been sitting on their floor that long, I would definitely
I don't know if, I don't know if they're here. Is what I'm saying.
Okay.
It was ordered like, I mean, you approved, I emailed them the day after.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, be a squeaky wheel.
All right, new business, childhood cancer awareness week.
So Mr. Chairman, I was looking it over. I don't have any issues with it. I just wondered if we should add to it. Um, I know that Rutland is not specific to children, but the Foley Cancer Center here in Rutland does an awful lot of work.
Yes.
And supports these other hospitals. So I wonder if a nod to our local hospitals appropriate in this.
It certainly would not hurt one bit.
So what you're suggesting is that we contact them and
No, 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 I'm just suggesting that, um, you add to the list.
Oh, I, I see this list here.
Rutland Regional Medical Center, just to give them a nod cuz they support, whether it's child or adult, they're supporting cancer work, no matter what age the person is, so.
Um, I think that's a good idea, but I think we should consider giving them a call first to let them know that we're gonna put them on this same list.
I personally don't think it's necessary. This is just a symbolic statement on the part of the leadership of the town, just like we do for, actually, I know I abstained from it last year, but you all did one for School Choice Day or School Choice Week last year, it's
Are you thinking of putting it in the, the statement or?
Mm-hmm, so the statement that came, what I would do is I would just add them after Dartmouth Hitchcock and just do Rutland Regional Medical Center and Rutland, Vermont.
Right.
And many other hospitals around the
Around throughout the country.
State. State, but anyway, um.
And if everybody's good with that, I'll make that a motion, that we go ahead and approve it with Rutland Regional Medical Center, add it to the list of hospitals.
All right, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, that's good. Good job, well. Uh, now comes a fun one. Forest Fire Warden uh, and Deputy Forest Fire Warden reappointments.
Oh, sorry, I mentioned that mic earlier. I don't have a signature from TJ for the deputy, um, appointment, but I did call him and he said, yes, he wants to do it again. So I don't know if you wanna reappoint just Clayton right now or both of them.
So you do have verbal confirmation though that he's interested?
Yeah.
So I would just go ahead and make the motion, it seems like I'm making a maltonite, um, make a motion that we go ahead and approve both of them, obviously, as soon as you get TJ's signature.
I'll second that motion.
And That's five year term, you know?
Okay.
Kind of through the state, same as the health officer.
Mm-hmm.
Now, for discussion. Before I sign that Thomas, uh, one, do you want to wait till we get the formal request and then uh, when Katie gets that, then I'll come down and sign this?
He has to sign it anyway, right, so we have to wait for his signature.
Yeah, I emailed him the paperwork, so he's gonna send me a signed one, so if you wanna approve.
So I can amend my motion that Mike signs it once we get TJ's signed one, that. I'm good with that.
So, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Do a second and aye.
I did. It looks like we all have to sign this. So.
I think three.
Is one, two, three, no, four, five.
Passing on around.
Yep. We're not signing the second one until he.
Yeah.
And then when people come in, they can. Sign it, all right, Katie?
Yes, that works fine.
Uh, UniFirst contract shop rags.
So currently, we have a three year contract for rags for the garage, it's twenty-five dollars a month. I think we started that last year, however, since May, they've not delivered. So I contacted them, told them our story, and basically were able to find rags somewhere else for cheaper. And they were okay with us terminating the contract and understood our frustration. So, I'm looking for approval from you guys to terminate the.
All right, is anyone, Rob, like to make the motion?
I made a maltonite, let somebody else make it.
Make the motion. To get all the contracting that we, is there a second to Cass's motion?
I'll talk.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Katie, do you have any, uh? Thing you wanna tell us?
Um, I guess, just as a follow up, the MRGP draft, all public comments are due at fourteenth. Um, so just leaving that up, that for you.
So, so I looked at that, that's for up north, it wasn't really for here, was it? My interpretation.
Was that an email you received like this week?
No, when you sent it through last week, or two weeks ago. The MRGP comment, s- comment time, it didn't have anything to do with us, from what I, my take on it was.
The general permit, this one? This is for like all towns across Vermont, I believe. It's basically what we're under now.
Yeah, I thought that it was, what I saw for comment was only like Brandon and up north somewhere.
I can check, um.
Unless I misunderstood it, did you look at it?
Yep.
I didn't really have time to look at it, so. I'll go back and look at it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, you know.
Unless they're coming to hold Lake Shepherd, played watershed.
That's what I thought it was.
Maybe, yeah.
That's what I thought it was.
Did it, did you get a copy that came through with proposed changes?
It's just the draft one, um, it says it's gonna be effective January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
So. Did you email that to us, or did I just get one from the state because we're all on the list?
There's an update to Vermont Wetlands maps that I forwarded.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Did you scan that to us then?
Yes, I sent it to you.
Looking at it, I believe.
Yeah.
Co- and this is what the comments are due on the fourteenth.
I don't even know if I've seen that, okay.
Um, I can, do you want the paper copy, or?
No, I'll go back and, I'll dig for it. Yeah, this is what I'm thinking of, the, the wetlands update.
Yeah.
That's what I saw.
How many times they've been updating that, every time, so Patrick Courage comes through town. Between here and Middlebury.
They'll let us draw our own local maps.
Uh, that'll, that'll never happen.
Yeah.
It's a nice thought.
Thank you.
Well, they can't do it, set behind a desk to do it.
Michael, give that back to me. I'm gonna hang on to that.
I hate to say it, but. Got a better chance of seeing Jesus walk on the water.
Uh, so I sent it on Tuesday, I'll send it out again, just so you guys have it.
This, this is nothing more than what I'm seeing, there's nothing more than continuation, of what they were doing up, no other.
Oh, it's exactly.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
I'll take a look at it, Katie, I get so many emails in a day that.
That's all I have.
Okay, we, uh, I'm gonna mention this, Kevin, you sent a letter in. Dear Katie, if in the future, an opening should arise for Lister in the town of Clarendon, I would like to be considered to fill that position. Is there, did anybody, um, submit a letter to get off the border list?
No, there's currently no openings for Listers, as of right now.
All right, but I just wanna make sure you guys knew that this could be a possibility here. Uh, you are interested, I. Yeah, so.
Okay.
We have that on record. Um. We, let's, I did ask for an executive session, personnel issue this evening. Um. And. I'm, at this point, I'm not sure if, if the select board wants to go in and have a brief discussion. On the personnel issues.
I thought, I think, if I, if it's what I'm thinking it is, it's pretty well settled at this time.
All right, Bob?
At, at this point, uh, let's move forward a little bit, see where it goes.
All right, Rob?
I'm fine with, if that's where we're at.
Bart?
Seriously?
Seriously.
Seriously?
Seriously.
After all the BS that's going on, now you're just gonna smooth it over?
No, I meant this, why you have input. You wanna have a discussion in open meeting?
Yeah, let's have a discussion in open meeting.
All right.
Let's hear it.
All right. What is your opinion?
About what?
About why I was asked to have a executive session. Relative to a select board member trying to investigate something. Before coming to the board to ask permission to do that.
Okay, this is the first I've heard of that, what, 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 so, what investigation was being done?
Good question, I think there was a comment you made. Why are we taking our equipment off town property?
Yep.
All right, so would you like to explain that?
Because I got a voicemail that somebody complained and said that our equipment was off of town property. She wasn't happy, bushes were cut, it wa- and I went, drove by and I saw, I said, yeah, look at that. We were off town property, I got a complaint, I passed it on, I said, why were we off town property? That's it, am I not allowed to ask that question?
I think it's appropriate to ask that question in, uh, this forum. Open meeting. Do you have any comments on it, Chris?
I. And I, and I had this conversation and I explained to her, if there's any issues like that. Having to do with myself or the road crew or the town equipment, just give me a call. I have explained the situation. And the resident he's talking about, I didn't know her, never seen her before, never met her. And we, this is where we had serious ice problems over the years, and it needed to be corrected. And after talking with her, um, she was totally understood. And totally agreed about what we did.
And I had made the suggestion that the next time we go on private property, maybe we should ask first. Then I won't get a complaint, actually, I didn't even get the complaint, it came to the town clerk. It didn't come to me. And I didn't think asking why we were on town property, off town property, was that big a deal? He could have responded to that and told us why, and I would have been happy with it.
I didn't know nothing about it, until I saw the, the, the pictures and the email of, from the voicemail that got left here. I, I said, I didn't, didn't even know if a person lived up there, once while we see a chiropractor at the bottom, mostly in the wintertime, other than that.
But you knew you were off town property.
Yeah.
You knew it owned, it was owned by somebody.
And it was.
And you should have asked whoever owned it, the listers are here, they could have told you who owned it. That's all I'm saying, you could have asked first, and then nothing, this whole conversation would be mute.
And I'm not pushing anything under the bus or anything, but I was not at work that day. One employee was mowing back, and I'm glad he did because it.
Preparation.
Preparation, it took the brush out. Bob saw it and stuff, and he totally understood about, you know, what the program, project was. To be inputted. And like I said, I didn't even know how to contact her, if there was anybody that lived up there, at all. But like Art said, you know, like, guess I could got hold of the listers and found out who did own the property and do that.
I think going forward. Uh, if we have to ingress, is that the term?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
On, on someone's private property.
Right.
To, um, you know, protect our road from. Well, all this kinda ice issue and stuff like this, let's contact the people who own the property.
I usually do.
Yes.
I usually do, I have a conversation with them and.
Yeah, up on, on Schoolhouse Hill Road.
All, all the projects.
I wasn't trying to start any trouble, I just asked a question, why were we there, that's all. I wasn't looking to get anybody into trouble, I wouldn't, it what, didn't even have to go out to the public. All I wanted to know was why were we there, that's it.
So now we all understand.
Not allowed, uh, I, I guess I'm not allowed to ask.
No, now we all understand what the process is. On both sides of the issue.
Okay, and if, and if Katie sends me something in the mail and asks for my opinion. I don't say anything?
No, if Katie sends you something and asks your opinion, normally. All the other select board members are on that email. And so if you send an opinion back, all the other select board members hear what that opinion is. Or here's what your answer is.
Correct, what, what I would say is, within the caveat of, we can all share our opinions, but technically. We're supposed to make the decision in an open meeting, correct, but the, um.
This wasn't a decision.
But that wasn't a decision, that was, from what I saw, there was no real decision, correct, that was my take on that one.
Information gathering.
And I don't think that there's anything wrong at all with being able to weigh. All of us should be able to weigh our opinions without feeling like we're going to be questioned or, or whatever. I, so, sounds to me, and this is the case, and we've dealt with this off and on, um.
Over the years.
Communicate, over-communication is better than under-communication, and. Being able to have those conversations, whether it's, how many times have I picked up the phone and called, called you? You know, somebody reached out to me and said, hey, this is going on, you know, calling and saying, hey, this just happened. I know, I've done that with you before too, called, hey.
You have.
You know, as long as, as long as there's communication going on, but we shouldn't, there shouldn't be any ostracizing or whatever. However, however you wanna term it, there shouldn't be any negativity that comes out of that, I mean, that's, that's really where it comes down to. In my opinion, so, and. If that's ultimately where we're at and what's been going on, we gotta move on, we gotta, we gotta fix it and move on from it. That's, that, cause otherwise, we're not gonna function as a cohesive board, that's, we've gotta, there's five of us, we've gotta function together. So, whatever it takes to make that happen, we gotta make it happen. So, that's.
It's, it's like, there's been many phone calls that you guys don't know about, that people.
Oh, I'm sure.
Has just called me.
Yeah.
Had a conversation with them, even go and do a site visit with them, and explain different things or whatever.
Sure.
Whether right or wrong, or not to appease them, but just explain to them, this is how this is gonna have to work.
A- and again, the, you know, like has already been said a couple different times, I think that preventative communication is important too. Um, cause you didn't know, we found, you shared with me afterwards. I had no idea that you were stepping into what sounds like less than warm. Community relations in that area, is that, is that the way I'll put it?
I ran into that.
You'd, I mean.
Different projects where.
You know, and, and unfortunately, not knowing that. To a certain extent, you didn't even know what you were stepping into, so if there can be communication to alleviate that side of things. Like you say, then, then the phone calls don't fly.
Well, yep, and.
I, listen, I, I, I'm not thrilled about getting complaints, I don't want complaints, I don't need complaints. I'm not excited because, okay, now I've got the road crew, I could piss them off by saying that I got a complaint. That's not, that's not what I'm about, I don't really, I'm, I don't want complaints, so whatever you guys can do to avoid a complaint, great.
And that, that's the way a lot of the, I don't say complaints or concerns, I should say. Uh, whether they go to Mike, Bob, or Robert, or whatever. The, it's a one contact to me, or even a resident straight on.
I usually.
There's a lot.
What I normally do is, if that person is upset about something, just I listen because I'm being respectful.
Right.
You know, that's part of your mission as a select board member, but I, then if it's carried on or gets heated a little bit. Then it's a case of, we'll come to our next meeting, he's on the, and I tell him that, give Katie a call to get on the agenda.
Yep.
And we can discuss it.
That has happened.
And many times.
Yep.
I learned that from Ralph.
Long time ago.
So I mean, the long and the short of it is, it sounds to me like, i- if, if stuff comes in. It, it's just, it's gonna get passed along. Um. And it'd get dealt with, I mean, obviously, Cass is road commissioner, if a direct complaint comes in. It's on your plate. You like it or not, right?
No problem.
Yeah.
That's what I'm here for.
And what I would say is, I think, I've heard it over and over again, that, um. People appreciate how you've been able to get back to them, and they get phone calls back, or they get whatever. Talked to and say, hey, I'll come up and see you, wha- however that looks, I think that that's been a positive, um, positive for us. But like I say, we got, we gotta be able to, whatever it looks like, be able to pass stuff through, that's gotta, it's gotta happen. Now, I understand this one wasn't a direct, it was on the. I guess, in a way, it's a matter of public record, cause it was on the town clerk's. I guess, in a way, it's a matter of public record, cause it was on the town clerk's voicemail.
Voicemail, right.
Is where it came through, so I guess that's, I don't know, whatever you wanna call it, that's a little little bit of a different scenario than.
I guess she didn't even have my number.
The lady didn't, you mean?
That was. That's what she said, she didn't know who I was.
I mean, so I'm, I'm encouraged to, to hear that. It sounds like the situation up there has been resolved. For the most part, it sounds to me like that's, that's a positive, I mean, that's good, okay, the issue was corrected. Now I think it's a matter of making sure, within this board, we can have open communication and move on. That's, that's the way I see it, so.
Well put. I think, right now, we discussed this open forum, so. I think the people, taxpayers of town, if they're viewing this, they'll understand that, you know, we, we have this concern. We hashed it out to some extent, and we have an understanding where we have to in, in some cases, improve our, um, discussion periods. Uh, and. Work harder to work together, I think, so. I don't know. That being said, then. I think that, uh, Art, do you have any other concerns?
Nope.
Rob?
No, but I believe we do have a guest that's arrived.
Hello?
Hi.
Would you like to state your name for the.
Shannon, I like I emailed you about that coin drop for the Friends of Football.
Yes.
So, um, I don't know if you, did, were you able to add this to the agenda?
Uh, well, you're here now, so we will.
Okay, um, yeah, so Friends of Football needs to do some fundraising for our football team, which I don't know if you've heard, but we're doing fantastic.
Yeah.
And, um, we have a couple of playoff game, well, at least one playoff game coming up on the twenty ninth, and we were wondering if we could have a coin drop on Middle Road as people head into the playoff game. The morning of the twenty ninth for two hours before the game, which I believe starts at one o'clock.
My only suggestion would be to get in touch with the sheriff's department, see if there's any rules that they have.
Yeah, you know, we called here, and they said, call the sheriff, we called the sheriff and they said to call here, so. I just figured I would ask you, uh, we did, um. Yeah, so we've called them and they, they said it's up to the town.
The only thing that I would say is we're definitely gonna need a certificate of liability insurance from somebody. Um. Naming the town as additionally insured, whether that's the Booster Club, whether that's, however that works, there's gotta be some sort of a liability waiver or something on file. So that if something were to happen.
And I would suggest nobody under eighteen in the road. Just a suggestion.
The other thing is to put a sign on either side.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could, if, um, if you guys had signs that we could just borrow for the day? Do you have any signs that's saying like, slow down? We're gonna get a coin drop sign from somebody else that does coin drops, like one of the fire departments, but do you have just like, slow, like signs just saying slow down?
A bunch of cones.
Cause what we're thinking is, um.
Colms?
We have colms. We just don't have like, slow down.
Or bump, bump ahead or something.
Well, the one lane, that's a good suggestion, do you have the one lane?
Cause we thought about just having it as you enter the high school, cause we want kids in uniform as much as we can, cause I think they'll frankly garner more money, um.
Can they, can they actually do it as they enter in parking lot?
It's good, it's just we would miss the traffic of Middle Road, but, I mean, I understand the safety.
But most of the traffic be going to the football.
I'm hoping though, I'll be coming to the football game, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it as they enter.
It'd be on the, the school's own property.
Yeah.
Unless it backs it up on the middle road, causes issues there.
Well, I think that's why those signs would be, you know, slow down, single lane.
Caution headers like that, we don't do it. I don't think.
See any like, like orange signs that'll say that?
Nothing.
From construction or no?
Yeah, no, nothing like that.
But do you have one lane signs?
Yep.
Yeah, we got one lane.
Well, so they could bar that, you set up on, as you come in. But we could put on the road on north and south end, um.
Be almost advertising, false advertisement.
Right, one lane. Because you're gonna have traffic backed up while people donate. So we have, we know how some.
How about?
Go ahead.
Now, the fire department, they do much coin drops in here?
They used to.
Is there a reason why they don't anymore, I thought, ma, we weren't talking to Matt about that or some.
I talked to Matt, he said they, they stopped doing it, they used to do it on one oh three, and he said there was a, a rule about speed limit. And one oh three has too high a speed limit to do it on, and he's not sure what the speed limit actually is. Um, and they were gonna do it on Middle Road, but. He felt that hitting the taxpayers. The, the local taxpayer is up for more money, he didn't think was right, so that's why they never did it.
But they might have signs. Maybe they still got signs, maybe they've still got their stuff.
That of Wallingford, that's the reason why Wallingford did it, well, Art just said, they have in the village.
Yeah, Wallingford does it because it's twenty-five mile an hour through the village.
Right in the village.
And they do have signs, so you can.
Yeah, we do have signs, so I live in Wallingford, I could ask them, um, for the coin drop signs.
But, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, sorry, my school ha, on and town, like, thinking liability wise, you gotta have a waiver or a certificate on hand from somebody.
Yeah, because I recall, wasn't there also? When Robert and I just mentioned about one oh three, didn't something come back on the town insurance on that too, that we could not do it? Or had to have specials? But it might have been, it might have been a different insurance company, it's quite a number of years ago now, that I'm thinking about. But I know there was a question, someone wanted to do one in town, and the insurance company was quite adamant against it, I don't know why.
And I, like I say, I don't know who carries the insurance in this case, it would probably be, it, it might even just be, cause you have to have certificates of insurance on file, whether it's the school itself, or if it's.
Yeah, it's considered a school, um. Like a student activity account, so we don't have our own like liability insurance.
Yeah, but you would fall under the school, cause you're functioning under their auspices.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, they approved. Already got approval from the administration.
So if they've approved, yeah, so it's just as simple as they need to call their insurance company and get a certificate of insurance for the town. That says, yes, this is a school approved activity. And it's falling under our insurance, and you, all they have to do is request that their insurance company list the town of Clarendon as an additionally insured party.
And that's just if we're on Middle Road, if we go off the road, then we don't have to.
Correct. Correct.
What that mean with backing traffic up, if just load traffic coming in and holding it back?
I would say that would fall to the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you've all been to Mill River, like, we could do it at the other end of like where you enter, so that it's not like, you know, right on the road.
So when you pull in.
Pull in like, curve around to the right, like before they go to park, we could do it at that end of the entrance. Um. Yeah, you guys don't think that we would miss very many people on Middle Road, traffic?
You're gonna miss some for sure.
I'm a little football, I avoided the middle road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve it as long as a certificate of insurance is on file, listing us as additionally insured.
There a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just, uh, and that we just touched on here, Mendeel, Robert hit it, uh, they absolutely sure the traffic will back up down on Middle Road. They have the sheriff's department there, you know, one of their cruisers or something, somewhere. Maybe in front of the mill or something, somewhere in that area that, that it's coming up ahead.
They normally send somebody down there anyway, right?
I don't know, I, I've never noticed a police officer there.
I haven't seen them.
Would that.
Haven't seen them with the hot, locals, with the elementary school any lately, cause they've had a couple of walks and so on. And I've not seen nothing with sheriff's department. You know, maybe they were up on seven D or something, but, uh, won't have it on Middle Road, I've not seen them.
I haven't noticed anybody directing traffic during the games.
Used to be, uh, bust his name from Wallingford.
Tiff.
Tiff, Nelson Tiff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering if he would come. Be there.
Yeah, that'd be up to you to, I don't know if he still does that.
He would probably do it just to be nice, you know. Oh, he is retired, yeah, but he's still.
I'd say let the sheriff's department handle it, uh.
Yep.
Because they're. They work here in town anyway.
Well, would they be functioning on a town, our town forty hour?
Oh, I'm sure they would.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be a part of it. Yep.
Better call state police then.
He lives right across the street.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So do you want me to reach out to them and make sure that they're there for that coin drop for the two hours? Is that what you're asking? Or just so they're aware of it?
Well, I would say, it, it sounds like you've already called them and made them aware anyway.
I have not called the sheriff's department.
Oh, I thought you said they directed you to us.
Oh, well, we called, yeah, we just called generally asking about a coin drop and, but we didn't say a specific time or date or anything. We were just asking how we get approval, and they said, call the town.
Okay.
But we didn't like get into specific details.
Okay.
Katie, do you have to provide any additional contact information for sheriffs?
I, I would say you need to, first off, let them figure out if they're gonna do it in the parking lot, or if they are gonna pursue the insur, insurance certificate so they can be on the road.
Do we have a town council or C J?
Yeah. So maybe, do you think you can decide that sometime in the next week or so?
Sure.
I mean, I, the school, it should be. I know how my insurance company works, it should be pretty simple to get the certificate if you're gonna pursue that, so.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, been seconded, we've had discussions, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So, you're gonna get some information and decide whether or not you wanna be on the road or in the parking lot, um, talk to, um. Well, I guess, talk to Matt about signage, and if that doesn't work out sooner rather than later. Then maybe we can at least put some, you know, provide two signs for either end of the caution or slow down or one lane, so people are at least aware.
Okay.
They should have a coin drop signs. Either Clarendon or even Wallingford.
I know Wallingford has them, yeah, I was gonna ask them if nobody else had them.
But, but whatever you do, keep in contact with Katie or the town clerk.
Yeah, I'll let you know either way.
Yeah, so that we know.
All right.
Let us know when the games are, so we can avoid the roads.
You're not gonna come to the games? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other board members have concerns?
I'm set.
I'm all set.
Take a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done, done, done.